Well, good afternoon, good evening to everyone to the Public Safety Committee hearing on proposed code changes to the Columbus City Code. I'd like to welcome our speakers from the Columbus City Attorney's Office, Melanie Tobias and Laura Baker for attending and putting on a presentation about our code and proposed code changes. I view this as the first in a series of hearings and proposed code changes for two reasons. First, to streamline the Columbus City Code to match what's required now by state law. And as state law changes, our Columbus City Code must change in order to reflect what we are allowed to do and what we should be doing as mirrored in state government and state law. And two, to identify weaknesses in our criminal code and strengthen sections and penalties to give public safety officers and the judiciary the tools to punish those offenders who are damaging our neighborhoods and undermining progress. So with that said, we do have some speakers that I will call after the presentation. You feel free to sign up with speakers directly with John Oswald if you want to speak. He's going to bring us, slip up to John, but the floor is yours, Melanie.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Klein. Okay. As you just indicated, the Ohio Revised Code, many of the City of Columbus ordinances mirror what's in the Ohio Revised Code, and the Ohio Revised Code changes.
I want to make sure your microphone's on.
Now is it on?
Now it is.
There we go, thank you. And as the Ohio Revised Code changes, we need to ensure that the Columbus City Code is also keeping in step. So for ease of discussion at the presentation tonight, we've divided up these criminal code amendments. The first section we're going to deal with are ones amendments that are being proposed to keep the city code in alignment with the Ohio Revised Code. The second set of amendments that we'll discuss is new legislation that's being proposed to strengthen the Columbus City Code. And we'll start off with city code sex offenses. We're going to look at sexual imposition, importuning, voyeurism, and public indecency. These have been changed somewhat significantly in the Ohio Revised Code specifically relating to the penalties for violating these ordinances. Sexual imposition, the language in our city code no longer tracks the Ohio Revised Code. The Ohio Revised Code added a couple of years ago a section specifically dealing with mental health providers who would possibly use their position and status to abuse their patients and commit the crime of sexual imposition under the guise of treatment. The city code doesn't have a provision similar to that. And the offense level has been enhanced from a third-degree misdemeanor to a first-degree misdemeanor if the offender has certain prior felony convictions. So the proposed amendment is just to add a section, it would be section number five in the Columbus City Code, providing that if you're a mental health professional, as defined in the state code, and your victim is a patient and you're making false representations in order to commit the offense of sexual imposition, that that is a violation. And then if we look at the penalty section, the proposed amendment is to provide for an elevated offense if the offender has a prior conviction. And I believe this is for rape, sexual battery, gross sexual imposition, or unlawful sexual conduct with a minor. If you have that prior conviction on your record, then it would be a first-degree misdemeanor to violate the sexual imposition ordinance. Next, when we look at the importuning ordinance, the existing ordinances, section A and C on the city code, are now felonies under the Revised Code. So the proposal would be to repeal those because of the fact they're unenforceable under a city ordinance. So that would leave existing section B for importuning. The Ohio Revised Code had a similar prohibition to this. It actually referenced same-sex sexual propositions. That was found to be unconstitutional by the Ohio Supreme Court back in 2002. So the Ohio Revised Code simply repealed the section completely, whereas the Columbus City Code just changed the gender designations in the ordinance. So the proposal is just to repeal this section. It's not used, and like I said, there is no corresponding state code equivalent to this.
So Ms. Tobias, it's my understanding then that the recommendation is for repeal simply because, for one, the city lacks authority because of what the state law now is a felony?
Correct.
And so the county prosecutor then would still have an ability, under the importuning law, to bring a felony charge?
Absolutely.
But the state no longer has the authority, or the city no longer has the authority to do it?
That is correct. Next, we are looking at the voyeurism ordinance. The state code has been amended to add two more specific sections to the voyeurism code. And that would be, one, to prohibit surreptitiously invading the privacy of another person to videotape them in a state of nudity. There is no similar provision in the city code. And the second state code amendment prohibits a secret or surreptitious videotaping, filming, photographing, or otherwise recording somebody through their clothing. So it doesn't have to be a state of nudity, but if you're trying to see down their blouse or up their skirt, to see their undergarments, that also now is a specific offense under the state code. It's a second-degree misdemeanor and first-degree misdemeanor for both of those. So the proposal is to add those two sections to the Columbus City ordinance, since they are currently not in there. If you can see, that would be the suggested changes in there. There are also, if you look at the top in section A, there are just some, and we see this in a number of the ordinances we're looking at, changing gender pronouns to be more neutral. So while we're cleaning up these code sections, we would do that also. And if we look, there's our other penalties that would be proposed. So to videotape somebody in a state of nudity would be a misdemeanor of a second degree. To surreptitiously invade someone, traditionally called upskirting or downblousing is what you would hear in the media as it being described, would be a first-degree misdemeanor to do that. And the idea behind that is that when you're recording somebody or filming them, those things can be distributed on the internet. They can be posted for other people to see. It's much longer lasting, so the impact on the victim is longer lasting. So the idea would be that the penalty should be more enhanced for those offenses versus someone who's just what you would traditionally think of as like a peeping tom, looking through somebody's window. Now you actually have a recorded image of what you're looking at, and that would be a crime. The last sex offense that we are—
I'm sorry, I did have a question.
Oh, absolutely.
No, I apologize. Do you have any idea, because they both can be, involve videotaping, right?
Correct.
Of why there would be a difference, why trying to videotape, trespassing and videotaping while someone who's naked versus what you would consider, you know, downskirting or up, downblousing, upskirting? Why they would vary in degrees, why one would be a second degree and one would be a first degree? It seems to me that both are egregious enough that maybe they would both be first or both be second, so why is there a distinction? Do you have any idea why?
I don't know why, under the state code, there is a distinction. So surely council, if council wished to make them the equivalent offense, they absolutely could do that.
So does council have the authority under state law to make them both first-degree misdemeanors?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's make note of that.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. So next, we're looking at the public indecency ordinance. The language in the city code no longer tracks out of the state code. Specifically in the language, the state code was amended several years ago to provide that no person shall recklessly do any of the following, and there's a list of conduct you can engage in, in which your conduct is likely to be viewed by and affront others in your physical proximity. The physical proximity language, that's italicized here on the slide, that is what was added to the state code. It is not in the Columbus City ordinance. And I think the theory behind that, under the state code amendment, was you were getting prosecutions for individuals that were engaging in prohibited behavior, but it was only being viewed by somebody on, via like a security camera video. And that, according to the General Assembly, is not what they were attempting to legislate against, that the offense would need to be somebody that's in your area that would see the behavior that you're engaging in, not somebody a mile away, maybe potentially watching it over a security camera, a video camera. So that physical proximity language was added, and the proposal is to add that to the city ordinance so that it's not in conflict with the prohibitions under the state code. Further, the state code added another section to the public indecency statute, and that's identified here under section B, that made it a separate and distinct crime to engage in this behavior in front of a minor who resides with you in your household. So the proposal is to add that to the city code. If you look at the A section, it prohibits you from engaging this behavior if it's going to be viewed by and affront others who are not members of your household. Okay, so if the victim, quote-unquote victim in that case, lives with you, this subsection would not cover that behavior. So the addition of a section B for minors would cover that behavior. So if you have an adult in a household residing with a minor who's engaging in this type of behavior, masturbation, sexual conduct, behavior that appears to be sexual conduct, that that then would be a new violation under the proposed amendment for the city code and would mirror what's in the state code. Further, the state code, the penalties in the state code provide for an enhanced penalty if the victim is a minor under both subsections. The city code does not have any type of distinction to that extent as it is currently written. If the victim is a minor, there is no enhanced penalty. So the proposed amendment would follow and mirror the state code, and if your victim is a minor, it would be enhanced. So this language just tracks what is in the Ohio Revised Code. If you have prior convictions, it enhances the level of your offense every time you're charged with a new offense, ultimately resulting in a felony charge if you have enough prior convictions. Okay. So those are the sex offenses under the Columbus City Code. Next, we move on to theft and fraud offenses. The suggestion was to amend the Columbus City Code with respect to these offenses because last year, the Ohio Revised Code was amended to change the value amount for theft offenses as to what constitutes a felony. Previously, under the state code, a theft of anything of $500 or above, if the property value was that amount, it was a felony-level offense. That has been changed, it's now up to $999. It's a misdemeanor offense. $1,000 or more constitutes a felony. So as the city code is currently written, a number of our theft offenses are unenforceable if the value of the items taken is between $500 and $999. You cannot enforce it under the city code. So these amendments would simply bring the city code in line with the state code, change the value to reflect that change of $1,000 as the limit for a felony prosecution. Additionally, under the theft statute, there are specific items that are stolen that are now designated in the state code as felony-level offenses, such as a police dog, a police horse, or an assistance dog. If it's a chemical substance, anhydrous ammonia, if that is what is alleged to have been stolen, that is a felony, so the city cannot prosecute that under the city theft code. So we've proposed adding those, again, to mirror the state theft code. Same thing for passing bad checks and misuse of a credit card. The proposed changes simply bring it in line to allow us to prosecute cases for a value up to $999 under our city ordinance. The misuse of a credit card, we would also amend that to reflect the fact that, under the state code, if your victim is an elderly person or disabled adult, that has now been identified as a felony offense under the state code. So the city ordinance would reflect that fact, that that would need to be prosecuted by the county prosecutor's office under the Ohio Revised Code.
So Ms. Tobias, it's not that we think that we're getting rid of the code as a good idea, as much as the state law now dictates us to get rid of that section because we're preempted by state law and has to be prosecuted as a felony?
Yes, absolutely. Same thing for receiving stolen property. We would change the value amount so that we could maintain jurisdiction to prosecute individuals for a value up to $1,000, but then also delineating the fact that if it's a dangerous drug that's being received as a property, if it's a firearm or dangerous ordinance that's alleged to have been received as the stolen property, that is specifically the province of the state code. It must be prosecuted under the state code as a felony by the county prosecutor's office. Next is public conduct. There are just two ordinances that we're looking at here, inducing panic and making false alarms. And the proposals there are just to clean up these sections to more accurately mirror what's in the state code. The state code has added a number of additions that would make it, again, like previous codes we've discussed, if the type of behavior engaged in is of a certain nature, it would be a felony. So it's still able to prosecute it, but it needs to be filed under the state code because it is a felony, and the county prosecutor's office would handle the prosecution of that. So amending our city ordinance would simply delineate that and make sure that the city ordinance reflects the fact that these types of offenses are now felonies, to be pursued under state code violations. All right. And that would conclude the section of proposed amendments to bring the city code in alignment with the Ohio Revised Code. The next few code sections that we're going to discuss amending are new code provisions that are being suggested to strengthen the Columbus City Code. The first one, we wanted to look at our rules of construction. All right, if you look at Columbus City Code 2301.04, this mirrors what's in the Ohio Revised Code. And if you look at a number of offenses under the traffic code and the criminal code, and we discussed these with public indecency already this evening, if you have prior convictions, it will elevate the level of offense when you are charged with a new offense. You need to specify what those prior convictions have to be. And usually, when you read a code section, it will say, if you have a previous conviction to this code section and you are charged again, it is now a third-degree misdemeanor instead of a fourth-degree misdemeanor. By having a general rule of construction, as we have proposed here, you don't have to, in every individual code section, delineate all of the laundry list of prior convictions that would qualify, meaning is it have to be a city code conviction? Can it be a state code conviction? Can it be a state code conviction from another state? Can it be a Grove City conviction, a Worthington City conviction? It streamlines the process because basically what this general code rule of construction provides is that in any city code that references a prior conviction, the intention is to encompass all similar prior convictions, whether it's a violation of a state code, another state's code, a municipal ordinance from another city, a federal law. And we don't then have to say that over and over and over again in every single ordinance that we have. We can simply refer to the fact that if you have a prior conviction for this section, you face an enhanced penalty, then you go to this rule of construction which says prior conviction means any similar prior conviction, regardless of the government entity that you were alleged to have violated. So it is our proposal to add this to the rule of construction. And again, it mirrored, there is a similar provision in the Ohio Revised Code. Telecommunications harassment, the city has never had an equivalent code section. This is formerly titled telephone harassment. Over the years, it's been expanded to include all telecommunications, such as email, texting, faxing, instant messaging. We see a significant rise in stalking cases in the City of Columbus, and the use of all of these computer devices and social media unfortunately is very prevalent in these cases. The telecommunications harassment proposal that we have here mirrors the state code. So it's exactly what's provided for in the state code. You can't make or be caused to make a telecommunication to abuse or harass someone, to threaten someone, if you've been previously told to not make that communication. Those would all be violations. It's rather lengthy, but it does mirror what exactly is provided for in the Ohio Revised Code. So now that we have victims in the City of Columbus that are suffering from violations of this statute, we can file it under the Columbus City Code. Again, currently, there is no equivalent in our city code. There are certain provisions that are felonies, certain violations that would be felonies. Again, those are delineated in the proposed language for the ordinance. And then the final proposed amendment is an amendment to our misconduct on public transportation ordinance. Currently, the city code does not allow for an individual to be trespassed off a Coda bus. So if you have an individual who has been told by Coda authorities that they are no longer permitted to be on a Coda bus, period, and that individual is found on a Coda bus, they cannot be charged with criminal trespassing. The language under the state code criminal trespassing and the city code criminal trespassing applies to premises only, and a bus or any other vehicle is not a premises. So you could not charge that individual with criminal trespass. So basically, they would be given an opportunity to leave the bus, and if they complied, you couldn't charge them for being on that bus, even though they've already been specifically told by the public transit authority that they cannot be on there. So the proposed amendment, and this is, everyone will need their magnifying glass to read this, and basically, it's the underlying section towards the bottom of the screen. It would be a proposal to add a new section. It would be section M, which would provide that no person shall enter upon a public transportation system vehicle, as to which notice against unauthorized access or presence is given by actual communication to the offender. So basically, you've been told to stay off the bus, we find you on the bus, we can now charge you under this subsection of 231741.
And I know this primarily involves Coda. Does the written reprimand, that initial, get off the bus? Does that have to come from Coda? Is that a piece of evidence that the city would need in order to enforce this statute?
The city would need—
This code?
Sure. The city would need to show that the individual has been noticed by an agent—
Okay.
—of the public transportation authority. So Coda or a designated agent, it could be a special duty officer, there are other ways to do that. But yes, there would be, the city would have to prove that you have been notified that you're not to be on the bus.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And that would be the end of the presentation that we have provided for city council. If there are any questions?
Excellent job, Ms. Tobias. I have three speakers. Are there any more speakers, John? Just three? Okay. Speaking of Coda, we have the General Counsel of Coda here, Marshall Moore. Please, you have three minutes. Come on up. Thank you for coming down.
And just to give a little plug, you're one of the co-chairs of the Charter Review Commission, so certainly thank you to the service that you're providing gratuitously to the City of Columbus. I know it's a lot of hard work, and you're a very busy person, so thank you for taking the time and serving the city in that capacity. But the floor is yours.
My pleasure, thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman Kleinman. Thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding the proposed changes to the Columbus City Criminal Code regarding misconduct involving public transportation system. My name is Marshall Moore, and I am the Vice President of Legal and Government Affairs and General Counsel for the Central Ohio Transit Authority. Appearing also on Coda's behalf is Amanda Brooks, the Interim Director of Security, and Columbus Police Officer Brian Wingard, who serves as a special duty police officer for Coda. Coda is extremely grateful to Columbus City Attorney Richard C. Pfeiffer, Jr., and his staff for proposing language that would prohibit passengers who are guilty of misconduct on its buses from riding Coda buses, and Coda strongly supports the proposed language. Coda's corporate mission, in part, is to deliver quality transportation services and conduct business courteously, safely, ethically, and reliably. To this end, Coda has been diligent in aiding in the prosecution of those who violate the law while on Coda buses. I would like to provide you with a brief history of how Coda handles misconduct on its buses. When a passenger is disruptive or violates the law, Coda bus operators are trained to call in the Coda central radio room. Radio room supervisors will dispatch transportation service supervisors to the scene. In addition, as necessary, special duty Columbus police officers, paid by Coda, or regular duty Columbus police officers, are also dispatched to the scene. The disruptive passenger is charged with a violation of law by the responding police officer. Coda's legal department is notified of the same and provides evidence to the city attorney's office to aid in the prosecution, including, but not limited to, video and audio surveillance. Coda's legal department then requests that the passenger be banned from Coda's service as a condition of their probation. Coda began taking this approach in 2005 and has had great success in getting passengers banned when their behavior warrants the same. Thank you to the assistance and support of Columbus City Attorney's Office. Thank you for your consideration of the proposed change. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. I have no questions, and I appreciate your statement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Bridget Howe. I think it's a public hearing, and you signed up to speak, so come on up. Appreciate your patience. And just for the record, I understand that you're not speaking on at least the proposed code changes as offered tonight, but this is one of many hearings that we'll probably have on code changes, so certainly welcome your thoughts and testimony in any regard about the Columbus City Code as we sift through these potential changes. The floor is yours, you have three minutes.
Well, my job has changed, and so I no longer can make Monday night meetings. And so I had to check the schedule to see if I could come on another night, and this was the night that was available for me. So, and as you know, while I still live at 6182 Sunderland Drive, my name is Bridget Howe, and I have been speaking now for two years on this issue of gang stalking and directed energy weapons. Speaking of public safety, it is a serious issue. For seven years now, I have been coping with a band of lawless criminals who have no conscience, no restraint, no moral or ethical code by which they operate. When I first started to notice the invasions to my home, I did the thing anyone would do, I contacted the local sheriff. I showed the responding officer the footprint in the carpet, which could not possibly have been mine. I live alone, and the footprint, which the sheriff described as a stedson, was six or seven sizes larger than my foot. Next were the prowlers who showed up at my house at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning. I heard them standing outside my basement sliders. I saw the silhouette of one of them when he turned on a flashlight, which lit up the thin white curtain hanging on my basement door. I called the sheriff again. They rolled up to my house, lights flashing, just as I heard someone jump off my balcony on the back end of my house. The responding sheriffs were looking for footprints in dry grass, and of course, they didn't find any. The sheriff responding to me responded to me with a very ungentlemanly rudeness. Then things began to break around my house repeatedly. I would come home and find my door unlocked. I would change the locks, and the locks would be picked. I could see the scratches on the new lock, the bolt came out completely out of the knob as I inserted and turned my key. Then my phone would ring, and I would let the answering machine take the call. There was a silence on the other end, but I heard the sound of someone turning up the volume so they could listen. Later, I learned that it's called a flip switch. It's a listening device that can be installed outside of your house. Since the sheriff was no help and no one else seemed to listen, I did what any sane rational person would do, I went looking for answers, and I found them. Since then, I have become acquainted with multiple gang stalking victims who have all had similar experiences. Like me, they have been continually tortured by directed energy weapons, their homes have been invaded, cars vandalized, et cetera. They are all decent, stable, intelligent people who have had to endure a vicious criminal act, while public officials, lawyers, doctors, and even family members and friends look the other way. I have continued reading the works of other victims of this crime, and I recognize and relate to their similar experiences. I know exactly what is happening, and I know who is responsible. These are the kinds of things I don't think Americans want to be known for, and these are not the kinds of things that decent Americans want to do. Unfortunately, I think a lot of people were deceived into acquiescing or giving in to this gang stalking issue, and it's time for it to stop.
Thank you, Ms. Howe. Our next speaker is Linda Henry. Thank you for coming down, Ms. Henry. The floor is yours.
What I want to talk about is giving the officers more power to protect our street. They do a great job as it is. I can't ask for better officers in the City of Columbus because we have the fantastic officers. What I'm wanting is more power for them to be able to go out and start arresting these people that have outstanding warrants and that have had warrants for years. I have two major criminals right now running the streets. They have broken into my house. They have stalked me. I'm going to say stalked me by coming by my house. Luckily, with one great officer, we got that guy off the street, but now he's got another warrant, he and his father both. People like this need to be off of the street, and this is what we need to do, give our officers more power to be able to do something to handle neighborhood situations and drug issues and things of that nature. I know our officers are limited, but they need the help just as much as we do. And I'm asking for this, if there's any way possible, to do this for them and for us, to keep our communities safe. And I'm dealing right now with another community that is, they feel helpless. They don't know what to do because their hands are tied and so does everybody else's because they wasn't, because an offender wasn't seen at the time that, when the officers got there. And they know who's doing this, but they still can't do anything about it to prove it. How can we stop this? This is what we need to do. We need to start getting these offenders off the street and make these sex offenders stand responsible. They're giving false addresses and going to, and living somewhere else around children and things of that nature, and this is something else we need to stop. We need to get these sex offenders, if they're giving this, we need to get them back off the street and back into jail where they belong before they hurt another innocent child. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. And I think on that last part, certainly, I couldn't agree with you more that there are the folks, criminals are criminals, and everyone should be, everyone that commits criminal activity should be identified as such and be held accountable. But there's a particular place where, you know, sex offenders, and they need to be punished to the fullest, extended the law, and I think some of the— And I think some of the proposed changes that you heard Ms. Tobias say, mention tonight, strengthens our code in order to hold those people accountable to the maximum extent of law that the city has available, and that's a first-degree misdemeanor. Because those that are menacing in our neighborhoods and creating, and violating the sex crimes, they need to be held accountable. We need to clean up our streets and make sure they're put in jail as long as we possibly can.
Well, I know where one is right now. He is around children. He is in a filthy place. He's using drugs. He gave a false address. I know right where he's at, and we can't seem to get him out of that house because the police can't catch him.
Okay. Maybe give that information to either Gretchen or John, and we'll be, you know, we'll work with CPD to ensure that they have the resources, at least of this particular person. We can help them in any way that we can.
Okay. I'll get that out in the morning.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
Thank you.
Ms. Tobias, Ms. Baker, do you have any closing comments before we wrap it up here? Any other speakers that we're missing? Make sure everyone has an opportunity. Okay, please.
Nothing further, Councilmember Clyman.
Certainly, thank you for the work that you've done, the presentation, the work that you've done sifting through the code. You know, this seems to be a common sense approach to the Columbus City Code, to marry the requisite language for the Ohio Revised Code. And I certainly appreciate the work. It can be somewhat of a mundane task, to say the least, to go line by line to the Columbus City Code and match it with the current language of the Ohio Revised Code. But equally so, I think we've identified some areas where we can strengthen penalties for criminals who are wreaking havoc on our neighborhoods, and that encourages me, especially seeing great community leaders here like the Henrys. There, of course, Ms. Lisa Boggs. I feel for the work that Lisa and Linda, and what they do every single day, and every neighborhood has a Lisa and a Linda. And we, as a city, need to continue to step up. We have great police officers. We have great attorneys in the city attorney's office, great judges, and judges down at the muni court. We just need to continue to press forward, to hold people accountable for the actions that they take to plague our neighborhoods. It shouldn't be a one step forward, two step back, like it is in some of our neighborhoods, despite the efforts of the Lisas and the Lindas out there. So, we need to plug ahead. We need to strengthen our code, to give law enforcement officers in the city attorney's office and the judges the ability to put people behind bars that are causing havoc in our neighborhoods. So, certainly appreciate the work that you've done with this, and we'll take it further and continue this conversation and put this on first reading coming up, to at least change this, and we'll look forward to the future hearings of other sections of the code where we can make a difference, to make the Columbus community a better place to live. So, thank you.